Evening everyone, it's a regular meeting at Southfield City Council. This is Lloyd Cruz, City Council President. We'll take ask for a roll call. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. We had the roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Morris?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Mr. President, you do have a quorum. We have the mayor on the line, city administrator, and a host of other department heads. Thank you.
All right, very good. We'll now move on to our next item. We'll do our pleasure allegiance. And I will do that. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, our first presentation is our presentation, election of council leadership. So, and Madam Clerk, if you can just kind of work with me through this in terms of how we should do this, we'll start with council president for 2021. And so I'll open up the nominations from the council on who will serve the next council president.
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, Ms. Banks.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Lenny Taylor to be council president.
Okay. Duly noted. Are there any nominations? I'd like to nominate Councilman Daniel Brightwell. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, just to share with you before we do our nominations, I would like to remove my, excuse myself, remove my name from the nomination. I feel this team wished to rotate the chairmanship around, presidency around, and I'm all for that. And I've had opportunity to make my mark on the city. And to the extent that I'm kind of proud of what I've done. Our former council member Fraser indicated that he thought I was the most impactful first-term city councilman he's seen. And I think someone needs to be muted. Mr. Chair, could you ask somebody to please mute? It's disturbing.
If anyone's not speaking at this time, well, Council Brightwell, Councilman Brightwell has the floor. Please might.
Yes, totally worth flushing. But anyway, now I decline the suggestion. I do want to see the presidency rotated, but I'm comfortable with my, I made a mark on the city. And to the extent Councilman Fraser indicated that before he left, I had been one of the most impactful first-term councilmen he had seen in his 20-something years. To the extent that, you know, I think I've took, to this date, I've passed, I've initiated more resolutions and ordinances than anybody else in council. You know, within the last five to six years. But one of the big things I'm really proud of, I'll be short, is the Finance Committee. And I just found out that the our bond rating will be will be continued, but on the presentation to the standard and poor, it was to defend our rating. The, our Finance Committee was identified as being very functional, and they would show them some of our reports. And I pretty much initiated that. I'm really proud of that. And on a going-forward basis, I think that's a lasting mark that I made on the city. And a couple of other things that will drive the leadership of the city, the elected and the appointed leadership. A couple of things that are structured, a couple of things I initiated was the comprehensive need assessment. That will drive us for the next 10 to 15 years about our campus and the city's infrastructure. The class and compensation study, I initiated that. And we're finally getting that coming to fruition. And that will guide us from a standpoint of making sure that we are competitive when we hire people and we can now, people will know that they're being adequately paid and that job is fulfilling. And lastly, there are many others, but I'm really proud of this also. I initiated the purchase of the police body camera. I'm really proud of that. I think that will serve the city substantially. So with that, Mr. Chair, I just want to take my name out of the loop. And I appreciate your consideration. And I want the team to feel comfortable that we're rotating this chairmanship. It's a good thing. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
You kind of broke up there at the end, Mr. Brightwell, but I think we got the tenor of what you were saying to us this evening. And no problem whatsoever. So if there are not any more recommendations or nominations, I'd like to close the nominations at this time. And I asked our clerk if she would please call the roll.
Mr. President, at this time, the appropriate action would be to ask for a motion for the council president appointment.
All right. All right. Then we need a motion for Councilwoman Taylor to be our next city council president.
Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I'll make a motion.
That Councilwoman Taylor be voted in as city council president.
I'm gonna take yours, Ms. Morris, as a second. Mr. Brightwell actually made the motion prior to you. So I'm gonna say it was moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that Councilwoman Taylor serve as president of Southfield City Council for the year 2021. Now may I ask for the roll, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Motion adopted to elect councilperson Lenny Taylor to be the next city council president. At this time, Mr. President, we will turn over the meeting to President Lenny Taylor. Madam President.
Madam President, may I have just a moment?
Yes, of course.
All right, thank you so much. I just wanted to thank you and all my colleagues for the opportunity to serve as president and for your willingness to work and collaborate with ideas and projects and things. Me, to help things move forward. I've worked, feel like I've worked hard and tried to just, and I know I've had some health situations along the way. Nonetheless, you all have supported me and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. And I continue, I look forward to continuing to work with everyone. And I want to congratulate you because I believe that you will continue to carry on a very high standard as a leader in the city and as president moving forward. It's Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor, President Taylor.
Well, thank you. And thank you, thank you to all of the council people for nominating me and then voting for me. I appreciate that very much. I do intend to do an excellent job. I have a lot of good leadership to follow and to call on. So stay by your phones. I'm not afraid to call if I have a question or if I'm uncertain about something, I will call and ask. So I ask that you would all stay close to your phones and we will go forward together. We are a team and we will continue to be so. So again, just want to say thank you for the nomination. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. And with that, Madam Clerk, I believe we should take the nominations for the council president pro temp. At this time. Madam President, you can just open it up for the nominations. And once the nominations are complete, we can close the floor for nominations. Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for council president pro temp.
Madam President, this is Councilman Hoskins.
This is Councilman Hoskins.
And I wanted to nominate Councilman Mandelbaum for president pro temp.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any others? Hearing none, I guess we should close the nominations. Do I have a motion for us to accept the nomination for council president pro temp of Ari Mandelbaum?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we accept the nomination of Councilwoman Ari Mandelbaum to be council president pro temp.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, second by Councilman Cruz, to accept the nomination for council president pro temp of Ari Mandelbaum. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Motion adopted to elect president pro temp Michael Ari Mandelbaum. Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, I'd just like to also thank the council for the opportunity to serve as council president pro temp this past year. 2020 has been a tough year, but together as a council, we've really accomplished a great deal. I just appreciate everybody's trust and confidence in my leadership and I look forward to working with my new council and council leadership. And congratulations to you both.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your trust and your confidence in electing me as the pro temp for this coming year. And I will definitely do whatever is required of me and assist our council president, Ms. Council President Taylor, in fulfilling all the duties and making sure that everything is complete and satisfactory for the entire city and all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have presentation of the joint resolution, Small Business Saturday, November 28th, 2020. I believe that's you, Mayor.
Yes, it is. Good evening, council and listening audience. Each year, the council and mayor have issued a joint resolution in support of our small businesses. And this year, I think it's more needed than ever. Small Business Saturday will be November 28th. That's a Saturday after Thanksgiving. In your package, you have a complete resolution, joint resolution, that I'd like, I will not read the whole thing. Do a quick summary of it. And then I'm asking for a motion to approve the designation as Small Business Saturday in the city of Southfield for November 28th, 2020. Whereas Southfield celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Association, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the country, and they represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees. And in the past 20 years, they have created about 65% of the new jobs. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in private sector in the U.S., 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. Whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree shopping at small independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact on their, on the community. Whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported that day makes them want to shop, eat at small independently-owned businesses all year long and not just during the holiday season. And whereas Southfield Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore be resolved that I, the mayor of city of Southfield, members of the Southfield City Council, and the city of Southfield County, both from state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday in the city of Southfield and encourage residents in our community and communities that really across the region to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, council. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution, make it Small Business Saturday, November 28th, 2020.
Support?
Of course.
It's been, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilman Mandelbaum to accept the resolution as presented for Small Business Saturday. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Resolution for Small Business Saturday has been adopted. Okay, thank you. Did anyone have any other comments regarding the resolution?
Just thank you very much, council.
You're welcome. Next, we have review of the city's transportation assessment management plan.
Good evening. This is Leigh Schultz. First, I want to make sure everyone can hear me. I've sometimes, I've had issues.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. So the cities of Southfield has put together a transportation asset management plan. And this is really a review of that plan that we'll be submitting to the state, as well as some summary of our road projects and where we are now and going forward that we were coming to the city council with anyway. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So the transportation asset management plan, so the new acronym to learn is TAMP. So I'll say that several times during the presentation. So this TAMP includes all of our transportation assets, so pavements, non-motorized assets, bridges, culverts, and traffic signals. Then we will review our 2021 to 2024 projects where we have road bond money available and then some overall funding recommendations. And then certainly some time for questions at the end. Next slide. So in 2018, the state of Michigan enacted Public Act 325. And this is the act that required this transportation asset management plan. This is part of the Transportation Asset Management Council at the state of Michigan. It's under their purview and roads are really just a piece of this Transportation Asset Management Council. The rest of our utilities are also included. The state is just much further along in the pavement asset management philosophy because we've been monitoring and rating our roads and have had state reporting requirements in place for many more years. Southfield, due to the size of our road network, is part of the first round of local agencies required to formally submit a TAMP to the state in 2020. The last comprehensive pavement asset management plan we prepared was in 2014 as part of our road bond effort. And it was important information to share with Southfield residents prior to requesting their support of our $99 million road bond. This plan has to be updated and approved by our governing body and submitted to the TAMC every three years. And this is our first year of that. Next slide. So the TAMP formalizes into a single document the following. The inventory of all of our transportation assets, our performance goals, risk of failure analysis, our anticipated revenues and goals that we can tie to those revenues, performance outcomes, a description of any plans so that we coordinate with other entities. And sometimes that's, they think of other entities even within our own organization. So which we do very closely work with Department of Public Works for water and sewer investments that are needed. And then we do reach out to the private utilities as well. Mostly consumers' energy for gas lines. And then the last step is a proof of acceptance by the governing body. So at the end of this presentation, there is a resolution that's been submitted that will be looking for action on by council. Next slide. So these pictorially are the transportation assets that we're going to be reviewing. The pavement, culverts, bridges, signals, and the non-motorized assets, while not required by the TAMC, we are including it in Southfield's TAMP because we view them as an important amenity in Southfield. And we want to make sure that we're setting aside funds to adequately maintain our non-motorized facilities. Next slide. So we'll start with our road assets. And here's a map showing all of the city's local roads in pink and the major roads in the lime green color. In total, we have 249 miles of city-owned roads with 28% being classified as majors and 72% classified as locals. Next slide. Here's an update to a map you've probably seen several times, which shows the roads that, oh, I feel like we're off of one. Let me have you go to the next slide, please. There we go. So this is a map you've seen several times, showing which roads we've invested our capital dollars in since 2014. We've improved 107 of our 249 miles of roads. 37% of that has been in our major road network, 45% in our local road network. This represents 71 total projects since 2014. Just one of our 2020 projects that appears on this map, the Lake Ravine subdivision over by Nine and Easter, is not scheduled to be completed until next year, but still appears as the whole subdivision on this map for clarification. The next slide, please. So here's an update on another chart you've seen previously with our network pacer ratings. And this is just a recap of where we've come with our road bonds. So our $99 million road bond cast in 2014. The road bond money complements existing Act $51 and other capital funding. Other capital funding, meaning funding from the water and sewer available funds that have helped us invest in the neighborhoods. The first projects to utilize these current road bond monies started in 2015. Monies have been spent in both local and major roads. And then the adjacent chart shows our paving condition of the whole network overall of where we were up to 2014. And then we cast that road bond. You can see in the lime green is where we were estimating our condition network to be. And then in the darker green underneath is what we've actually seen our condition assessment in the last couple of years. We've kind of caught up. We've done some, some big projects that expended a lot of money, that spent a lot of money on some major roads. So it didn't cover a lot of miles right away, but we've caught up because just recent years, we've done some more neighborhood projects. Next slide, please. So this bar chart, this is of just our major roads and showing the last few years, just in a different graphic that you can see. So when we're talking about overall network rating, we still have to remember that this is made up of good, fair, and poor roads. So we have been chipping away at our poor-conditioned roads, but those are the roads that typically require total reconstruction, which is large investment dollars. And there's always going to be a part of our network that we have roads in poor condition. Our goal pacer for our network is a 6.0 with ideally no more than 20% of our major roads in poor condition. Next slide. So on our local roads, it's a similar bar chart, just showing where we are, you know, where the grouping of good, fair, and poor-conditioned roads are. There's some projections here for upcoming years based on where we have road bond dollars to spend. So you kind of see in these projected areas, some of the poor-conditioned roads are starting to grow because we've got, our road bond dollars are starting to run out and we've got them committed to some major road projects where we've secured some federal dollars. But again, those, those big projects don't cover as many miles. So our goal, similar to the major road network, is to have an overall pacer network rating of 6.0. Next slide. And so for the road assets specifically, where we're at now is at a 5.7 pacer rating. We've done a good job of increasing our overall network condition. And where we are now with the overall network is good. We're still concerned that some roads that are in poor condition, that have been in poor condition right from the start, we just haven't secured the funds yet to take care of all of those that have been on our radar for a while. So we were working to develop a secondary goal so that when we have a road that is in a failed condition, so not just the core of one to three, but a real, what we consider a pacer rating of one as a failed road, that it doesn't stay in that category for more than 10 years. And that can sound like a long time. In the life of a road, it's not so long. And some of these roads that are in poor conditions, there can be a big variation with how they drive. Some of them drive okay, but just because of the surface distress are rated in poor condition. So the next slide, please. So this is covering the level of investment and what the differing levels of investment, the effect that it will have on our network. So you've seen similar type of charts like this with pacer ratings. So we are here at 2020 and we know we've got some road bond dollars to spend in the next two to three years. After that, the very bottom here indicates no additional investment going into our road network. And you see how it doesn't take long, that curve just starts to slowly fall off. And then we've got varying levels of investment represented, $2 million, $4 million, $6 million, $8 million. Where we'd like to be at a pacer of six for our overall network, the recommendation would be to invest $6 million annually in our road network to maintain these pavements that we've already invested a lot of dollars in. And then we'd like to see $1 million annually that we're just dedicating to improve roads that are in that failed condition. So, so that roads don't stick there and get stuck for too long because the pavement management philosophy is, is always to maintain your good asset roads or your fair-conditioned roads and bump them up. But you know, these poor-conditioned roads, especially the ones that are all the way down to a one, they can't stay there forever and we want to make sure we're investing dollars in those as well. So the models help us predict these different investment levels. And ultimately, we're recommending in the road network, $7 million annually. So let's move on to our other transportation assets. So let's move on to our other transportation assets, and then we'll summarize financials at the end for the full transportation asset management plan. Next slide. So next, we're moving to our non-motorized assets. So in 2019, the city went out and inventoried 34 miles of what we designated as our non-motorized facilities, and these were off-street bike lanes. Any of the on-street bike lanes were really relatively new and in very good condition, but these are mapped here. This does not include every five-foot sidewalk throughout the city. These are just at a major connection points where we have existing facilities, and showed that 50% of them were in good condition, 15% were in fair condition, and 35% were in poor condition. Years ago, the city made pretty big investment on some of these non-motorized facilities, the off-road style ones that we have on some of our major roads, and we just haven't done enough to continue to maintain them, and they're starting to really fall into disrepair. The recommendation is to invest $100,000 annually so that we can maintain the current condition for some that are in fair and good condition, and then $250,000 per year will really begin to move that entire curve if we had an overall, we don't really have an overall number for the entire non-motorized asset, but just make sure that we're minimizing the number of miles of these non-motorized assets that are in the poor condition. Next slide. Maybe I missed the next slide. So this was our map, and here we go. The next slide, please. Yes. So next, we're going to review our bridge assets. Next slide. So Southfield is responsible for 16 bridges in the city. These bridges are inspected bi-annually. They have been for many, many years, so we have a good handle on their overall condition. The inspection reports are entered into the state's MyBridge system per state and federal highway requirements. Some of the inspection requirements have grown over the years, so there's now, as part of our bi-annual inspections, includes scour analysis for all of our bridges that are over watercourses, which for Southfield is the majority of our bridges. So our bridges are in pretty good shape. We've got 63% in good condition, 31% in fair, and 6% in poor. That 6% in poor is really just one bridge. It's kind of been on our radar for a while. It's on Easter Road just north of Nine Mile, and this will be the next bridge that we would apply for bridge funding for for total replacement. So our bridges, bridges that are in poor condition can be posted with weight restrictions, and worst-case scenario, bridges can actually be closed when it can't carry a certain live load on it. Southfield has no bridges, even our one poor-conditioned bridge does not have load limits or anything like that on it, so we're really not in a critical shape there. Our last bridge that was posted with load restrictions was our Nine Mile Bridge near Plumhow Golf Course that was replaced just two years ago. Next slide. So bridge funding is a little bit harder to come by, especially for what we predominantly need, which are maintenance activities. This slide, we were estimating annually what we should be setting aside. Every single year, we may not need to be investing in our bridges, but this is the amount of money that we would like to be setting aside so that we can package some bridge maintenance projects together, or else we want to retain some of this in the road funding balance accounts so that we can do a larger bridge investment, like a replacement, which is also more likely to receive funding. So this is showing, if we had full federal funding for everything that we wanted to do, the investment from Southfield out of our road dollars would be $130,000, and then we show a half federal funding type of level, and then worst-case scenario, we would recommend $540,000 be set aside for bridges. That's if we got no federal funding. That would really be worst-case scenario, but we definitely want to keep maintaining these bridges. Next slide, please. And the next asset will review our culvert assets. Next slide. So culvert assets are a required part of the TAMP. Southfield does not currently have a complete inventory of all of our culverts. There is certainly discretion on our part on what constitutes a culvert, so we're really just looking at larger diameter culverts, likely to be 24 or 36 inches and larger, the size of culvert that would actually have a serious impact if there was a failure under one of our local or major roads. So in the TAMP, we've really just committed over the next three years to assess and inventory our full culvert network so that we can determine the appropriate funding level for a capital improvement program. Next slide, please. And now our traffic signal asset overview. Next slide. So our traffic signals, with our signals also, we don't have a complete inventory. We can estimate the quantity pretty easily, looking at the intersections from our GIS and also from the Road Commission for Oakland County. Road Commission maintains and operates all of the signals in Southfield, ours and theirs, so they certainly have a good inventory, and they'll be a big source of information for us. So the map here shows 73 signals that the city owns, that we anticipate that are the city-owned signals, with an additional 16 that we jointly own with the Road Commission for Oakland County. So in the TAMP, we're committing over the next three years to fully inventory our signal network so we can identify our deficient signals and determine the appropriate funding level for our capital improvement program. Next slide. So now, overall summary for our whole transportation assets. Next slide. So this is coming up where we are anticipating to have our road bond dollars to fund some additional projects in the 2021 to 2024 years. So we've got 11 miles of major roads, and these major roads all have some federal dollars involved that we've been able to secure. We have two miles of local roads shown on this map, and those roads are not actually using road bond dollars because they're part of sewer separation, so are using the water and sewer bond funds to pay for those locals. A lot of the streets you see on here that are just in black, they're there because they've been on our maps for a long time. These are areas where we know we have road needs, some of them also have water main needs, but we don't have the road bond funds to move forward with those neighborhood projects just yet. So this is something that we're still working on, and it's going to be a little bit of a crunch this winter to see if we can push one more of these neighborhood projects to happen this year, because we certainly have some water mains, and we want to be able to come up with matching road dollars. Next slide, please. So this is showing the pacer rating of the overall network, and this was really the bottom curve on a slide that we saw several back when we were looking at the various funding levels. This is just showing of where we've come so far, just a little more blown up here, so you can see previous to our road bond passing is in the lighter green, and then after our road bond passed, where we've come with the improvements to our pavement network, and then what happens after '21, '22, where the remainder of our road bond dollars are spent if we're not coming up with additional funds to invest in our system, the curve starts making its way back south. Next slide. And just summarizing, as we, now that we've been through this many years of our road bond, we look back, we do a lot of analyzing of how far our dollars took us on different projects, and sometimes, you know, like why didn't it take us as far as we thought it would take us? And we've determined some of that was due to some of the construction costs have inflated beyond the predicted levels of inflation. There are just certain materials that just kind of skyrocketed. We seem to be a little leveled out right now, which is good for this upcoming year, but that's really something that's fluctuating that we don't have control of on a year-by-year basis. Also, originally, our 2014 projections really assumed our road bond dollars were only going to be spent into the existing pavements. In reality, our projects have included signal upgrades, you know, where it was needed, which was along many of these major road corridors, some non-motorized facilities that we've added, and some capacity improvements, like on 13 Mile, as well as investments into county roads. Certainly, these other things that we've spent our road dollars on were worthy, and they needed to be done, but when we're using our predictions, it is a reason I feel like we're not getting quite to where we wanted to be with our overall network here. So for the future funding considerations, we will need to continue to evaluate our funding level. We've made some recommendations here that we're presenting for you tonight. This overall network rating of 6 is a level of service that we think is acceptable to the motoring public and to our residents, and it helps us to preserve. We want to make sure that we're preserving the investment we've already made. And then just the reality, you know, not, got a few more years left of this road bond money, but not every single road's getting touched by a significant capital project before these dollars run out. Some of the things that don't show up on the maps, there's some things that are not considered capital investment, but there's still been a lot of joint sealing and things like that going on that do help preserve the pavements that we've worked on. These are low-cost things that really have a lot of benefit. They just don't necessarily appear on all of our maps. So our next steps, what we're doing now is rethinking strategy. So we want to make sure that we're focusing on the rehabilitation of pavements more than reconstruction, as much as we can get away with, because that's going to make a big difference in our overall network and preserving what we've invested. And then next, we want to target local roads so that we can meet our pacer rating goals. We've been very successful with our road bond dollars to secure a lot of federal funds, but now that those dollars are gone, well, going to be gone soon, we want to make sure that we're finding a way to continue to invest in our local roads, and particularly where we know that we have water main needs, and we can lump those two funds together to really make a big difference in a neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this is showing our investment strategy for the next couple of years, where we have road bond dollars. We've got projects already planned and federal dollars committed, and then beyond that, we just call it future because this is really just our recommendation moving forward of where we need to be. So the top here for the roads, you can see, and I'm more focused, I guess, on where we're going for the future, but we're, you can see, we've been spending in recent years, really since 2014, 2015, we're usually in double-digit millions of dollars that we've been investing in our roads. That's helped us really change the level or the direction of that curve and let it go up, but into the future, as the previous slide showed, just for road pavements, we're looking at a recommended investment level of $7 million a year. This will help us preserve what we've already invested in, as well as there was $1 million in there where we're rebuilding some failed roads every year. The non-motorized, this summarizes at a $250,000 a year investment, $540,000 a year for bridges, and not sure exactly where we're going to land on culverts and traffic signals. Certainly, we do not do a road with, that we are including in a project area without inspecting culverts and traffic signals along the corridor, so we do invest in those as we go, but we're just looking to summarize so that we can better budget where we're well into the future of where we want to be. So the total overall here shows our investment in our transportation assets at $7.79 million. We tend to round that up just so that we're being conservative, and the roundup is shown on the next slide, please. So this is just the chart to help us see where we are. So we worked with Austin and our Fiscal Services Department so we could see what our estimated expenses are. So this is a summary, you know, looking into the future of what we want to spend on preservation and structural projects, and this is in all of the transportation assets, not just roads. And then this includes where we have our administrative funds and what we spend on winter maintenance. These are just some things that we pulled from some estimates from, well, actual expenditures from past budget years, and then estimating going forward. So we show our estimated expenses annually at $15.35 million, and then we are looking forward to estimate the revenues. We're showing road bond at $0 because those dollars will be gone. The MTF funds, the Michigan Transportation Funds, same thing, just we use the terms interchangeably, that's the Act 51 dollars that we get. We're anticipating a little bit of a decline because of COVID on that, just less people that are buying gas and buying things in our state that are typically contributing to those MTF funds. And then we have our annual residential street levy that we get every year, and then some other income. Some of that is based on investments that we list there as other income, and so we're showing our estimated revenues at approximately $11.1 million. Currently, because we have been doing all of our big capital road projects with our road bond dollars, we do have some fund balance, lesser in our major roads and more in our local fund balance, where these MTF or Act 51 dollars, we've not been spending every dollar of that, which is good. So we've got a balance in those funds. This is showing that we do have some money to set aside every year, but we are still showing this funding gap of about $4.25 million. And that's something, we've got a couple of years worth of projects ahead of us, and so we've got some time and some ideas, working with Larry Searls over in Public Works and Austin in Fiscal Services to brainstorm and see what our options are for closing that funding gap. It's really where we feel that we need to be, so that we are providing our residents with the road conditions that will be acceptable to them, and that we can continue to maintain what we've invested in already. The next slide. It's really the summary of all of it. It's a ton of information. I know in your council packets, you also got the full transportation asset management plan. That's what we'll be looking for your acceptance of that plan in the recommended council resolution, and then we can submit that to the state.
Are you looking for us to vote on the resolution tonight, please?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Shereka may need to help me on exactly how that's supposed to happen. I know this is under presentations because there was a lot to talk about here. I knew it was going to take some time, but we are looking for action that council, you know, just kind of overall, you've heard it many times with our philosophy of asset management with our transportation system, but looking for that concurrent is part of this resolution so we can forward that to the state. So the resolution really is just outlining the Public Act 325 of 2018 where the plan is required, and then the transportation asset management plan includes the inventory and condition information for Southfield's transportation assets, and demonstrates our responsible use of public funds, and whereas the transportation asset management plan must be updated, approved by city council, and submitted asset management plan must be updated, approved by city council, and submitted to the transportation asset management council every two years, be a result that council does hereby adopt the transportation asset management plan as presented.
So, Madam President, this would just be treated as a receiving file with us adopting the resolution that City Engineer Schultz just stated.
Okay. First, we'll open it up for council to, for comments.
Councilwoman Morris, I had a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Morris.
Yes. Thank you, Lee, for sharing the information related to the budget management and planning of our transportation assets. This was an excellent, excellent presentation. But I do just have a question. You did share when you went over the cash flow budgeting that there would be the funding gap of about 4.25 million. Is it in your estimation that we may need to do another road bond to secure those funds?
You know, that's, I would say that's one of the things that we'll be looking at. I don't think that we can automatically go to bond because there's still going to be payback period for the existing road bond. So that's some of the area where our finance people need to help me out to see exactly what our options are. It may be that we have to, that we can do that, but we may have to wait a few more years before we can even ask again. So in that case, you know, sometimes it's going to be sitting down with our Public Works Group with Chenesta and Larry over there to take a look at the budgets in the Department of Public Works and Streets and Highway to see, it's like, can we set aside a little more out of, you know, their different expenditure accounts that we can set aside for capital? So it's really, it's going to be a lot of work. And I, you know, Larry and Chenesta are up for it, and Austin tolerates us as we sit down and go through this and see where we can set aside as much funding as possible so that we can continue to invest in capital.
Okay, thank you.
My computer froze. I actually have no questions. I talk to Lee frequently, so I get it. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. No questions for me, Lee. This is a very, very good and very thorough presentation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Lee, a very excellent presentation. It was easy to follow. On slide nine, you had a risk of failure analysis. That's something. So how extensive is that risk of failure, your analysis, and is it, is it big?
So, risk of failure for local agencies is sometimes a bit less critical than it is for major highway projects. But for us, I mean, there's, to me, it's a bigger risk when you've got a road asset, especially culverts and bridges, if you think of those, they're a little more clear-cut. So if something was so deteriorated on a bridge that we had to close a bridge, it's like, not only is that an inconvenience for motoring public, when that's on a major road, that affects the economic viability of our city. So if we have a bridge on a local street that needs some work and a bridge on a major road that needs some work, that risk of failure just kind of bumps that major road bridge higher on our priority list. So that's happening in the background on many of our projects. It's just not something we're often talking about before council, because that's just part of the decision-making happening on the background.
Yeah, I understand. It's part of the maintenance, it's part of the job. But who performs that risk of failure? Is it an ongoing, or either one of our outside consultants?
I've been working a lot with OHM on our capital planning of our transportation assets. They were pivotal in helping me compile, like, this is all information that we've had, we've been talking about it. But to get this all in one single document and then, you know, present it to council tonight, OHM did a lot of work putting it together so that it makes sense and that we can present it in, you know, 30 minutes-ish and give everyone a full understanding.
Okay. All right. No problem. Like I said, it was a very good presentation, easy to follow. And I appreciate it. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Lee, excellent presentation. Thank you. I do have a question on the non-motorized assets. So, and that, I'm assuming is the sidewalks, is that correct, or bike paths?
Yes, predominantly bike paths and some of our wider multi-use paths that we would call them. So that, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Go on.
I was just going to say that on that specific slide that includes the map, you can see that the roads that we include that were evaluated back in 2019.
Is that slide 16?
I believe it is your slide 16. I found a duplicate slide at the last minute, so my own slide numbers are now a little off from yours, but it's...
Because I don't see, I'm assuming red means bad, green means good, and yellow. I mean, there's no color code as to when we might address this, or, and it looks like some of the bike paths might be missing from here.
So these, yeah, we would have to take a look at that. Some of the paths, these are self-designated paths. Some of the areas that we call paths are, do not meet the current federal highway requirements to be bike paths. So we usually include them anyway on our maps, although we have to be conscientious of how we're submitting it to the state because they are not always in agreement with us.
All right. Because as people are, you know, walk, doing a lot of walking, riding bicycles, they're just, we need a lot of improvement, it seems like, on our bike paths and our sidewalks. And I'm glad to see that this is part of the plan, because we've got some areas where it's really bad. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment before we go into taking a vote? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, may I please have a vote for us to accept the adoption of the resolution as presented?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Brightwell, make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Support?
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for us to accept the adoption of the resolution as presented by Lee Schultz. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the appointments. We have an appointment to the City Center Advisory Board of Ms. Janet Stevens. Mr. Mayor, I believe this is yours.
It is. Before I comment on this item, just like to acknowledge Lee Schultz for a very thorough report. This is a tremendous blueprint for us of where we've been and where we're going and what we need to do. Yes, Counsel, this evening, I do have one appointment. This is Janet Stevens to the City Center Advisory Board. Ms. Stevens has been a regular attendee as an alternate. Her boss, Dale Wachowski of Redeco, the real estate company that, among their properties are two very significant buildings in Southfield, the Oakentown Square complex. So Mr. Wachowski, the CEO, CEO of Redeco, he no longer has the time to be the full-time member of the City Center Advisory Board, and would like to elevate the, his alternate, Janet Stevens, to the board. So I'm asking Counsel this evening to approve the appointment of Janet Stevens to the City Center Advisory Board. I need a motion to that effect.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Janet Stevens to the City Center Advisory Board.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Support.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell to approve the appointment of Janet Stevens to the City Advisory Board. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Appointment of Janet Stevens to the City Center Advisory Board adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Stevens on the line? Would she like to say something?
I don't know if she's on the line. I'd refer it to Clerk.
Madam President, we have about 16 people on the line. No one raised their hand. Okay.
Well, congratulations to Ms. Stevens, if you're listening. Next, we have three sets of minutes, Counsel. May I have the approval?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes of August 24, 2020, the regular meeting minutes of August 31, 2020, and the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 8, 2020.
Is there support?
Support, support.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been motioned by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilman Brightwell for the adoption of our minutes, our regular meeting minutes of August 24, our regular meeting minutes of August 31, and our Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 8. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Resolution, motion adopted for the three sets of minutes. And Madam President, I did just send Council updated email of the 2021 City Council meeting schedule with the appropriate election dates on it. That was something that was previously discussed for the agenda item, consent agenda item, just so the way.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, we are now at our consent agenda, and we have items A, B, C, D, and E. May I have your acceptance?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E as presented.
Support, Councilwoman Morris.
Okay. It's been motioned by bright, Mr. Councilman Brightwell and supported by Councilwoman Morris for the adoption of our consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda items A, B, adopted.
Next, we are going into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is PZTA 20-0003.
This is Planner Crowe. I'll be introducing this item. This is a text amendment related to mobile magnetic resonance imaging units, or MRIs, and other amendments that may become necessary as needed for the city of Southfield. Next slide, please. Next slide. This has been discussed with counsel on numerous occasions. We've had some difficulty in compliance with these mobile units that just show up. They are required to go through zoning board of appeals currently for temporary use permit for one year with a one-year extension. And as part of those conditions, they're supposed to be located in the rare buildings, and they're supposed to be screened appropriately with protective environment for patients who exit the building and entering this. Next slide. And we have had some successes and mostly, mostly challenges where in the upper left-hand corner, this was, had temporary screening for a couple of years, and then the lower left-hand corner, you can see that the unit was actually incorporated into a building addition. So therefore, you can't, you can't tell that the MRI is in there anymore. And then on the upper right, we had this unit that was originally parked in the middle of a parking lot, relocated to the rear of the building, but yet on screen. And then they constructed this temporary garage structure to probably do that. Next slide. So what we are proposing is adding a definition, clearly defining what mobile units are, allowing them in any zoning district that allows medical office and clinics where applicable, and that the medical units are committed in conjunction with an approved permitted medical office or facility, and that they're, if they're going to be housed in an attached or detached accessory structure with or without a roof, there are a number of conditions for screening. Any unenclosed mobile medical trailer, which is unlawfully located or operated prior to the effective date of the section, shall be removed. And then there are additional State of Michigan Department of Community Health regarding approval for operation of the mobile medical trailer. These will, these trailers will now be regulated under our zoning ordinance as opposed to going to the zoning board of appeals and getting temporary uses. So the, again, just to summarize, this text amendment addresses on defining mobile medical trailers and designating zoning districts where these trailers would be allowed, as well as conditions of approval and other amendments that may become necessary. Next slide. So with that, Madam Chair, I would recommend opening the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You seeing that this is a public hearing, I'd like to now open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wish to speak to this topic, you may do so now, and you can speak for three minutes.
Madam President, just to remind the individuals that want to speak, it's a lot of attendees tonight at this council meeting. To press star three, I'll also be unmuted, everyone, too. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, for all the, if, the listening audience, we just heard the clerk ask that you would do star three if you wish to speak at this public hearing, regarding this public hearing.
Now, we have a speaker, Madam President, right now.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hear me?
Yes, would you please state your name and address for the record?
155. I keep hearing a recording device, like a voice. I don't know what's happening with this system. It's saying I'm muted and unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm just concerned about the fact that this project has taken so long. The city first approved this mobile MRI unit to be in like a little mobile home. The project people were not in compliance with everything that the city said. And then all of a sudden, the dynamics changed. What are they asking for now? And are you willing to allow people to come in under one auspice, get approved for one thing specific, don't follow the rules for a year and a half, maybe longer, and then come back before council as if this is a new project with a new dynamic and everything is hunky-dory? So what exactly are they asking for and willing to do now that they have not done and didn't do when council first approved this project? And I guess I can yield the rest of my time.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else, Madam Clerk?
Not at this present time.
Okay, thank you. Hearing the, seeing that there is none other for the public hearing, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, I will go to you now for questions. And we will start with Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Brightwell.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins.
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris.
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. To Planner, is there anything else you want us to say before we?
I just will respond to the public's question, if I may.
Yes.
That, I just want to again clarify that the process currently is through the Zoning Board of Appeals and therefore, it does not come before council. And the Zoning Board of Appeals grants a one-year temporary permit with a one-year extension. This proposed amendment would get the mobile units under the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and City Council for review and approval. And therefore, that's why we think it'll strengthen our ability to get compliance with these buildings. So that's all I wanted to say on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Would someone make a motion, please?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I will gladly make the motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve PZTA 20-0003, the zoning ordinance text amendment.
Support, Councilwoman Banks.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks for the approval of PZTA 20-0003. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
Public hearing, PZTA 20-0003. Council initiated zoning ordinance text amendment.
Thank you to the council.
Thank you. Next item for the public hearing is the Economic Development Initiative.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Rochelle Freeman, Business and Economic Development Director for the city of Southfield. The city of Southfield administration is seeking your approval for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district, Northwestern Highway Service Drive Commercial Rehabilitation District Number Four, for a PA 210, 2005, as amended for the property at 21500 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan. This item was brought before City Council at their October 19th Committee of the Whole Meeting. It's anticipated that Contour Companies will be seeking approval of a commercial rehabilitation exemption for four years, should they proceed in purchasing the former Northland Mall property. As a good faith effort, we are looking to establish the district. The district is a requirement from which they can request their exemption. I do want to note that the city would continue to collect taxes on the land and the current value of the buildings, should a project move forward. The owner of Contour Companies, along with Luke Bonner, are on the call. I'd like for Dave and Luke to give a short presentation regarding their plans, should their project move forward, after which, we're requesting the City Council hold a public hearing for that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, council members. This is David Dedbukai, COO of Contour Companies, joined by Luke Bonner with Bonner Advisory Group. I am here to present a short but sweet presentation for the redevelopment of the old Northland Mall and the Hudson City Market. Just a brief background of Contour, should we jump in or is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. So Contour is a predominant.
Please bring up the presentation.
Hello?
Yes, hi, David is still on. Could we bring up the presentation, please?
Unfortunately, these are the only slides.
Madam President, would you like me to try and share a presentation?
Madam President, can you give us a second to see if we can get this presentation out?
Yes.
Okay. Shelley, I don't know if you want to share your screen or window can't give you those capabilities?
I can do that, I'm pulling it up right now.
We're not gonna pull it up, Shelley, just give him one second. He's gonna pull it up. Give him one second.
Please bear with us as we work through our technical difficulties. We'll be right back shortly.
Shelley, he's gonna allow you to share the screen because it wasn't coming up on, in the air drive. So he's gonna give you permission so you can share your screen, please. Are you there, Shelley?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. He's gonna give you permission.
There we go. Can everyone see it?
Yes, we can see it.
Please, Dave, go ahead.
Yep, so Contour focuses multi-family housing. We're a real estate development firm out of Bloomfield Hills, focused on mixed-use developments and multi-apartments, multi-family apartments. We're a vertically integrated company. We manage, we have our own management, marketing, architecture, development, construction, maintenance staff, all in-house. We own and operate about 7,000 apartments in nine states. And we're committed to the growth of communities, very much like the situation in Northland and the situation that's occurred with the mall itself. I'd like to go to the next slide and talk about our phasing. Phase one will encompass 45 acres. The new construction, the vertical construction, will be just under 1,400 apartments on Greenfield with about 95,000 square feet of first-floor retail. The demolition and cleanup of the old Northland Mall will also occur during phase one. And in that section, we will also renovate and build 254 loft-style apartments. And the biggest plan here is the redevelopment and repurpose, the adaptive reuse of the old Hudson's building into a food hall, home furnishings, and fun destination in the city of Southfield. This slide shows the different phasing. So all the red is phase one. The purple will be the roads, the city roads that will go also in phase one. Phase two is the green sections, which we are still working on. Our goal right now is to focus on phase one and to have a successful phase one. Luke, would you like to add on to anything?
I would, thank you. And thank you, Madam President, and members of council. Thank you, Shelley. The purpose for our request for a public act 210, which in essence is a property tax freeze at the value of the property and the buildings prior to the redevelopment taking place. We have requested a four-year PA 210 term. Over that four-year period of time is when Contour will be building out both the infrastructure to serve the property and the development, and then also the multi-family units and the restoration rehabilitation of the jail Hudson's building into a marketplace and loft residences. During that time, there will be a significant amount of capital deployed by Contour and there will be a significant amount of carry cost. And so during that time period, what we're seeking to do, while the property is essentially not yet revenue-producing for Contour and therefore unproductive, but more of a cost to Contour during that four years, that we really are trying to minimize the overall real estate property tax impact on the financials through that first four years so that we can adequately build units and then begin renting them and then become cash flowing property, in which case around year five, the taxes would go into full effect. And that is the request.
Did you have more to the presentation, Luke?
No, we just had those five slides.
Okay, wonderful. Madam President, at this time, we would request that you open a public hearing to discuss, again, establishing the district. And I just want to reiterate that we are not able to grant any request for the exemption of the property until there's a new owner. So until that point, then we would come back. But the establishment of the district is the first step.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing and I would like to declare the public hearing open for the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district on Northwestern Highway. Anyone wishing to speak to this topic, please do a star three for you to be recognized by the clerk and we can hear your comments. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I want to appeal to the petitioners and say that when you come to a public hearing, you said your names very fast. The residents always want to know, who will the city be dealing with? So if you could just maybe put up an electronic card or put your necessary information down along with your name and your position, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm on the city site now, looking at what you're planning on doing and establishing the district. And I am very pleased, but I'm also concerned. Concerned that you only brought five slides with you and they don't really show a lot, but pleased with the actual written commentary of what you purport that you are going to do. There's a couple of things that I'm very passionate about with anything that we put in that Northland property. And one of those things would be police headquarters. So if we're going to establish this commercial rehabilitation district, in the resolution, I want it to include the fact that it will be a police department included in this particular project for this particular establishing the commercial residential district Number Four, located at 21,500 Northwestern Highway. The second thing that I am interested in with a company that has so many large apartments or a large volume of apartments that they deal with, it's another good thing to get the residents involved. So I'd like to know if the petitioner is open to having a resident housing advisory board. And the purpose of this board in this district would be, if they have any problems, they go to the city and then the city would put the resident or the petitioner together and we would work out any difficulties. But if you're going to develop this project based on the visionary plan that the city and the residents put together, if you're going to go over and above to put this project together with precision and keeping all the residents in mind, the diversity and the things that we like to do from a diversity standpoint in this city, I could support it, but I've got some concerns and I will address those concerns further down the line for communications. But it looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald, thank you, Ms. Gerald. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
That's okay.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right, thank you very much.
Okay.
We did note your recommendations and your concerns. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
Not right now, Madam President.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll open it up for council for you to make comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. No, I really don't have any comments. I'm very familiar with the project and I support it. And I'm honored to see great things happening at Northland.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum.
No, you know, I looked at the proposal, the maps. I think this is gonna be a great start. I'm excited just with phase one, I can't even wait for phase two. But I definitely think that this is going to be a great. wait for phase two. But I, I definitely think that this is going to be a, a great development for the city and help to reinvigorate, um, that side, that side of town, that property. So I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no real questions for me, but, um, just like my colleagues, I'm really excited about, uh, getting this project underway. I mean, I think it's gonna be such a great thing for our city and our region and our state. So I'm looking forward that we're, I'm looking forward to stirring the, lay that groundwork tonight.
Great, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Oh, no questions at all. Uh, just glad to have been, uh, able to help see this fruition and, uh, get this thing moving. So, um, uh, just, that's pretty much all I have to say for this evening on this particular matter.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Um, no, I, I echo my, uh, colleagues' words, and, um, I chair the Northland Committee currently, so I'm all in favor of what was presented. And if you're ready for a motion, I will give a motion.
Uh, no, we still have, uh, to hear. Thank you, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I think this is a really exciting project, and I concur with all the comments, um, that have been made by my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and just as a reminder, this, this, we're, we're, what we're talking about tonight is strictly the, the district. We're just talking about establishing the commercial district, not the project itself. So we will take your, uh, comments under consideration when we discuss the project, but we would like to keep these in mind. Uh, right now, I'd like to, um, accept a motion for us to accept an establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, um, I make a motion that we approve item B, the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district as presented.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for us to accept the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district. Counsel, I mean, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks.
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Economic Development Initiative has been passed, and, um, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to say, can we go back to PZTA 20-0003 and ask for a introduction of an ordinance number for that?
Right, that ordinance number for that will be, uh, 1729, and, uh, we do apologize for the oversight.
And thank you all for your assistance. We look forward to working with you and Contour in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Going back to item A, uh, counsel, may I have a, a motion to introduce ordinance number 1729?
Yes, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we introduce ordinance 1729 for the text amendment, uh, we discussed earlier.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by, was that Mr. Brightwell?
Cruz.
I'm sorry, supported by Mr. Cruz, for us to introduce ordinance number 1729 for the zoning ordinance text amendment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell? Brightwell?
Yes, I was on mute. Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Introduction of, uh, ordinance number 1729. Again, Madam President, thank you for going back to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are at our site plan, or before we go to site plan, is anyone else on the call, mayor or anyone else, uh, department heads that had a comment or would like to speak to the two public hearings that we just had? Okay, hearing done, we can go to the site plans.
Thank you, um, through the chair, and again, thanks for, uh, the catch. We were, we were ready to go back to that ordinance number. Um, our first site plan is a dismissal of PSP 20-0009 Extreme Loans located at 29444 Northwestern Highway. This was previously advertised, but the applicant has withdrawn his request to put in a drive-through bank teller station, and they were adding a deck for employees on the rear of their building, which was within the setback limits, which would have triggered a waiver. And for those two reasons, that would have had to come before council. They have, uh, readjusted the deck, that it does not require a waiver, and therefore they can go through an administrative approval on the deck, and they've withdrawn their request for a drive-through teller at this time. So therefore, there is no council action or items needed. Uh, but since we did, uh, advertise this, we're asking the council to acknowledge that by dismissing PSP 20-0009 with a vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, should we just take the vote, or, uh, counsel, would you like to comment, or is, or should we just go straight to the vote?
The vote.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
This is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we approve item A on the site plan, the dismissal of PSP 20-0009 Extreme Loans.
Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, that we approve the dismissal of PSP 20-0009. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item, proposed postponement of PSP 20-0012?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This item was also advertised for this evening tonight, but due, due to some legal issues with the, um, lot split, uh, we are asking this be postponed to a date certain of December 14th. For PSP 20-0012, Yukon Building and Development, to allow the applicant time to clean up some of the legal issues with their, uh, lot split. And this is the former Holiday Inn, Best Western property, uh, dealing with the rare, um, four or five-story, uh, hotel that will be coming forward, um, at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, may I have them?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we postpone PSP 20-0012, Yukon Building and Development to the December 14th regular council meeting.
Support, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to postpone, to accept the approval to postpone PSP 20-0012. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
The proposed postponement of PSP 20-0012, Yukon Building and Development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next section is on communication. Madam Clerk, do we have, uh...
Yes, I'll unmute the individuals that have it up. Uh, and I just unmuted them.
Okay. We're ready for our first speaker?
Hello? Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Section 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled "Amendments", which describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan State law known as the Michigan Home Ruac of 1909, thus making Section 11.18 null and void. Yes, you heard me right. Section 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter has not conformed with Michigan State law since 1958. That is, for the last 62 years. That's a long, long, long time, and still counting. In a word, it's about time now that you folks here on this city council need to fix Section 11.18, along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, this is Pamela Gerald, and I think you already have my information, and I wanted to speak on the Northland project. We purchased this property in December of 2015, and all we've had is just basically a lot of talk about what we wanted to be done with this project. It appears as if we might have someone, a viable developer, that would have access to a lot of capital, that can come into the city and put the city's vision in place, since we paid so many hundreds of thousands of dollars to have that visioning session with the residents, in terms of what we wanted to see in the city. And I'm just hoping, because I, I, I heard them say, or I think I heard Shelley say, if they continue to proceed with it, I'm hoping that they will actually, uh, proceed with it and do their very best to develop this particular property. I'm hoping that they put the vision in place that the residents wanted to see, that it would address things like a walkable city, that it would have recreation. But my main concern, and I want it included somewhere in the legal writings, to prevent them from saying they're going to do one thing, and then when they start developing, they change their mind. And all of the resolutions, the legal paperwork, I want them to include that they will be providing a facility for a downtown police station, a state-of-the-art downtown police station. And that needs to be a part of all of their paperwork. That is one of the best community benefits that you can give to the residents, seeing that we lost our downtown police station with the demolition of the original Northland property. I'm hoping that this is not going to be a place where weed stores will be allowed, because I know the, the city at one time was thinking about settling for the least amount to put weed stores there. We don't want that. I'm, I'm reading what the city provided, and it appears as if these people might just be the real deal. But even with the real deal, we have to make sure that we have those community benefit housekeeping things in order and on the paperwork. So I want proof that they're going to put the police station there, and that...
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. Your time is up. I hate to interrupt you, so thank you.
I'm looking at my clock, Ms. Lynn Taylor.
It's not debatable. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Can we go to the next speaker, please? Madam Clerk?
Yep, the next speaker has just been unmuted. If you have prefect's number, uh, if you just raised your hand, prefect's, your phone number starts with 645, been unmuted.
55992, I didn't know I'd be taken in. Is this timing appropriate?
Yes, thank you.
May I bring comment to the city council then, please?
Yes, please. Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Joel, J-O-E-L, Milinsky, M-I-L-I-N-S-K-Y, and I'm bringing to council an address that is not my own, but the household of my daughters', which is 28844 Red Leaf Lane.
Okay.
And the comment that I'd like to make is relative to the construction work that was done through the summer and spring, when they were replacing, uh, the water main and doing other road and sidewalk work. Um, it appears that by circumstance and for the convenience of the construction crew, that they chose my daughter's home, though the approach and the sidewalk was the staging area for the, let's call it a, a shovel, a large, uh, steam shovel of sorts, no steam though, you know, a, a dirt hauler, was used throughout the three and a half months to haul dirt out of trucks and into trucks and other supplies, and was backing continually up and down her driveway, and her whole front of the property in the street was used for staging all of the construction of the north end of, uh, I guess it's called Cranberry Village from 12 Mile down Red Leaf Lane, and all of the requirements for the construction crew. Uh, all of this work was done consistently on her, not on her property per se, though the trucks would roll up into her driveway. Uh, but there was a lot of activity, a lot of noise, a lot of vibration, a lot of dust. A lot of workers were hanging out in front of her house the whole time. She was very concerned, um, that she really had no peace because she had to work at home as a result of COVID. Anyway, all of this kind of came to a head where finally, her plate glass window in front of the house shattered, and, and I was called on it because she didn't know what to do. And I went out and had to tape the window up and replace it. Um, and I ended up making claim against, or to the construction company, who took no responsibility for her plate glass window shattering. I sent photographs to...
I'm sorry, Mr. Milinsky, your time is up.
Okay.
Did you, uh, if you, I'm, I'm not sure what action you want the council to take with that. It seems like that's a, a, a legal matter?
Well, I, that's what I've discovered, is that the contractor is taking no responsibility despite the fact before and after shows there were, you know, um, cracking to the brickwork, and obviously the glass shattered and replaced. I was told my only action at this point is to take the, the construction company to small claims court, which is more of an outward encounter with civilization than I care to do during a pandemic, and I was just...
Okay, so, can I ask you if you would turn your, uh, information into our clerk, and we will have someone give you a call from administration or either engineering? will have someone give you a call from administration or either engineering? And we could, they could talk to you a little bit further with, about this?
Well, that would be very fine. I have let Lee Schultz know about this, because she was the city official. I will drop the paperwork off to the city clerk for you to review.
Okay.
I just thought that it was a shame that the construction company made no attempt to let the homeowner know that their property was going to be a primary area for staging all of their construction work, when there were other locations in the subdivisions that were dead ends, that would not cause this disruption to a household.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to the council's attention. If you, like I asked, if you would leave your information with the clerk, we will have someone give you a call, and you can talk a little bit further there.
Thank you so much for making this opportunity available for me to voice my concern. And I thank you for your time and the time that you've given for me to input the system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
Madam President, I do think that concludes our request for communications this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, we're now into the counsel portion. I will go around and ask anyone that has something that they would like to share, to please do so at this time. I'll start with Councilman Cruz.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I simply just would like to thank, again, the city of Southfield residents for allowing me to service President for the last two years. I want to thank you personally, Councilwoman Taylor, for being such a wonderful colleague with me. I want to thank Councilwoman Morris, who was President Pro Tem during that time. I actually served with both of you all, have been my Councilwoman Pro Tems in the last two years, and the rest of the council. We're not in this to do anything other than make this city better than it can be. And so I just, I'm just very thankful that I have such great colleagues, and what I would say is friends, that I have grown to know, and, you know, keep moving Southfield forward. I also want to thank the mayor, who is also another one of my dear friends, our city administrator as well. I mean, this is our city attorney, and I know, you know, you started naming off people. I don't want to leave anybody out, but I'm just speaking in the moment right now, and I hope that everyone understands that, that it's been a privilege to be President for these last couple of years. And it's still a privilege to be on this council. So, thank you, Council President Taylor, and Council President Pro Tem Mandelbaum. And look forward to continuing to work with you all like we always have done, and I hope everyone has a great evening.
Thank you for those kind words, Councilman Cruz. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the only thing that I really want to say is, I just want to speak about the issues with COVID that we're having right now. As I'm sure everyone is aware, that the governor, or the Department of Health and Human Services yesterday issued new orders, kind of a modified shutdown, pause to save lives is what they're calling it. And it's because we've seen a drastic increase in the amount of COVID cases here in the state. And I would just simply say to people, we are, we're getting close to the, to the end now. We're kind of in the home stretch. We are not, we now have the prospect of two vaccines that might be available by the end of the year. But we just got to hunker down now and make sure that we're all staying safe, so we can make it to that point. Please, if you don't have to go out, don't go out. You are out, wear a mask. I know it's tough with the holidays coming up. But we have to make sure we're safe and we're healthy, so we can make it to the next holiday. Like I said, like, we're on the verge of having two vaccines that could come out by the end of the year. So you might get a nice Christmas gift. You might get a nice Christmas gift this year, and with two vaccines. So please stay safe. If you need to get tested, you can always go to michigan.gov/coronavirus, and they have information about testing sites. But please, everyone, make sure you stay safe.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
There you go, thank you. You know, I would echo what Councilman Hoskin said, just, you know, please be patient and be safe when you're, when you're going out. Also, again, I'd like to thank my colleagues for trusting me to be the Pro Tem for this next year. And just like our council president, Taylor, mentioned, to be by your phones when she call, because she'll be calling quite often. My phone is also always available, and that goes for residents too, when you're, if you're listening. Feel free to call me. But also, I would like to thank our past council president, Councilman Cruz, and our former Pro Tem Morris, for the work that they've done this past year in getting us through, or through the pandemic so far, and helping the city make its way successfully through that. So other than that, I have no other comments. Just, I know we don't have a meeting next week, so I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you so much, Council President Taylor. And I was just going to say that I will have my phone by my side and make myself available to you, as well as Council President Pro Tem Mandelbaum, if you have any questions or need any additional assistance or support as you're navigating your way through leadership at the city. Thank you again to Councilman Cruz for all of your leadership, and I do consider you a friend, and I consider all of you a friend on the council. We are a pretty good team. I do want to say, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe. We all have to put our cards on our public health, and we do see the cases skyrocketing, so please be safe if you're out in a public space, or if you're at a public place. Please wear a mask. Please wear a mask. We have a lot of individuals out who are feeling that their freedom is being threatened, and they choosing, choosing not to wear masks. Sometimes situations can escalate. And so just please try to adhere to, like you said, the governor's orders, and, you know, do what we can do to help keep all of us, all of us, safe this holiday season. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you very much. To Councilman Cruz and Councilwoman Morris, I'd like to thank you for your leadership role this past year. This has been an extremely challenging year, and you have both done an excellent job moving our city forward and working together with the council. To our new council president and new council president Pro Tem, I think, you know, to speak for everyone, we're all looking forward to working with you and your, your leadership in 2021. I also would like to wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. This holiday season is going to look a little bit different for everyone, but we need everyone to work together so we can reduce the COVID numbers. Be creative this holiday season. FaceTime your family, friends, and loved ones, you know, or places Zoom call. In fact, maybe you can even share different recipes, you know? We're challenging our families, since we're all going to be separated, you know, to come up with something different. Say a prayer, you know, via Zoom. But do find something different and creative that, you know, several years down the road, you can look back and remember this Thanksgiving and put a smile on your face. And like my other colleagues have said, please wear a mask when you go out, please avoid crowds, and, you know, more importantly, just stay healthy and stay safe. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I echo everything that's basically been said, really. But I do want to remind everyone to stay safe and to use common sense when you need to go out. And I want to just give the new leadership team my blessings for a very good year. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you to Councilman Cruz and to Councilwoman Morris for their past leadership. And I want to say thank you to this entire council for putting your trust in me to lead you this upcoming year. I thank you for your honesty and your heartfelt words and thoughts and your friendship, as you've mentioned. I also wanted to take the time to say thank you to all the veterans. I know last week was, we celebrated Veterans Day, but I wanted to personally thank all the veterans for what they've done, because we couldn't be here doing what we're doing had they not done what they've done. I also want to bring attention to this month. It is Men's Health Month. There, it's to bring awareness to the men's health issues, such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health. Men are, the suicide rate of men today, because of the COVID virus and all of the complications around it, men's suicide rates have gone up. And so we need to really pay attention to that and help in any way we can. I also want to take a moment to send my condolences to our own Judge Deborah Nance for the loss of her son. She buried her son on Wednesday, Veterans Day, November the 11th. So I send my condolences to her and her family. I also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I pray that we all stay safe, wear your masks, do your social distancing. And again, thank you for allowing me to lead you into 2021. And thank you, everyone, for your confidence in me doing that. So thank you. Next, we have the mayor.
Good evening, once again. I want to comment on the things that have said, been said, rather, regarding COVID. Over the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday through this morning, Michigan had 12,763 new cases, and I think 50, 60 more deaths. For anybody that doesn't believe this is real, it is, it is very real, and we're up, approaching 200,000 cases in Michigan, with huge leaps every day. In Southfield, in the last month, from October 15th to now, we've seen 394 more cases. At first, we were doing pretty well in August and September. As cases were rising elsewhere in Michigan, Southfield was only seeing very few new cases, and now we're reflecting the rest of the state, I'm sad to say. On the other item I wanted to mention is that we are continuing with the big rake. We had volunteers out on November 7th and 14th. We will be back out this Saturday. However, due to COVID, we are not, may not, we have fewer volunteers, and we may not be able to have the success that the program has had in years past. Our last Saturday will be December 5th, and leaf collection in the city of Southfield, or yard waste collection, will end on December 11th. And I also would wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and it'll be different for all of us. But there will be other Thanksgivings, other holidays, and there will be a time when we're past this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we go to administration. Fred? Mr. Zorn, are you on?
I am, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Okay.
I have two items of business this evening, Madam President. The first, after our last committee of the whole meeting, additional information was shared with council regarding the administration's request to approve contractual services to retain the healthcare advocate, three-year contract, $25,000 a year, to provide support services to our 750-plus retirees. If you look at it, this is a website, a mobile app. We're really looking to provide greater assistance to our retiree healthcares as they go through Medicare enrollment and other changes to retiree healthcare. So I am requesting a resolution to allow the mayor and clerk authority to sign the agreement with the health care, subject to the approval of the agreement by the city attorney's office.
Counsel, I will go through the roll, and if you have any questions for Mr. Zorn, let's start with you, Ms. Banks.
Questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes.
No questions? Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I will open for motion. We need a motion for a resolution to accept the approval of the contractual agreement with retiree services?
Ms. Banks?
Cruz, so moved.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to accept the approval of the contractual agreement for retiree services. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz? Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Requested approval of contractual agreement, retiree services have been adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Zorn?
Thank you, Madam President. The next item was presented also at the last committee of the whole. That's the administration's request to appoint as part of my management team H. Maria Calhoun to the position of Deputy Director of Human Resources. There is one correction to the item, and the salary is $108,577, 108,577. And I'm requesting that council hereby confirm the appointment of H. Maria Calhoun to Deputy Director of Human Resources, effective November 16, at a grade P and a salary of $108,577. She will be subject to the six-month performance review with the same rights and benefits afforded to her as... to her as other management group employees.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
The appointment of Maria Calhoun to Deputy Human Resource Director, effective at the time of, presented as Mr. Zorn stated.
Support, support.
One more.
Okay, I'm sorry, there was so much noise. I heard, Councilman Brightwell, you supported?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to accept or confirm the appointment of H. Maria Calhoun to the position of Human Resource Deputy Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks.
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Appointment of Maria Calhoun to the Deputy Director of Human Resources adopted.
Thank you, Council. I believe Ms. Calhoun, or Dr. Calhoun, is on with us. She's currently in the West Coast. Maria, are you with us?
Let me see, Fred, there's so many people on here. Let me see if I can unmute some people. Are you there? Dr. Calhoun?
Well, perhaps not. I thought she was going to be with us. If I may, may continue, Madam President.
Yes, please.
First of all, on behalf of myself and the entire management team, we would like to congratulate you to your selection by your colleagues as council president, as well as Mr. Mandelbaum as Pro Tem. We look forward to serving under you and carrying out the activities of running day-to-day the city and moving things forward. My entire management team, after two years under Council President Cruz and Pro Tem, Morris, we'd like to thank them. When you spend two years in the trenches, you get to enjoy the company of working together and moving things forward, and it was a pleasure to serve under their leadership as well, and we are excited, obviously, about 2021. I want to just comment a couple other things. It's been mentioned last Wednesday was Veterans Day. I'd like to thank our folks in Public Works and Community Relations. The veterans' flags are flying very high and proudly. It's always appreciative to see that. I had a number of people go out of their way to say how much they appreciate the city when we put those flags up, and it's usually Memorial Day and Veterans Day, so I want council to know that the kudos did come. The peace poll celebration was a very well-received event. The peace polls are very thought-provoking, the many languages, and I think it's something I would encourage everyone in the community to get out and see. I think the mayor mentioned leaf collection is the last day for pickup, is Friday, December 11th. Want to comment on COVID. I will tell you, last week, I had the pleasure of seeing a contract that was for both testing under our parking lot, which serves the court in the police building, but the contract also had language about it being, that location being used as a site for a vaccine. As Councilman Hoskins has indicated, we now have two potential vaccines on the horizons with both a 90 and a 94.5% success rate, and it gives us a glimmer of hope in what has been a very long seven months. The governor's announcement yesterday resulted probably about two and a half hours of discussion with our management team. We will, effective on Wednesday until the three-week period, as requested by the state, we will be open primarily virtually and by appointment. In other words, our front doors will be locked. The general public will be able to perform business as we had during the pandemic initially, both virtually and by appointment. You know, and we'll continue to work our way through that and form some type of communication tomorrow, Wednesday, for the city council. Want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and as it's been said, if, you know, I think we're closer to the end, then there is hope. So, that's all I have tonight, Madam President. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. That brings us to the attorney section.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. Congratulations to you, and good evening to the honorable body, mayor. And I believe it was October, there was a Supreme Michigan Supreme Court decision that came down regarding the Open Meeting Act. One of the things, of course, that really had a significant impact on the Open Meetings Act as it applied to public bodies such as the city council, was that the orders after April 30th were issued by the governor were invalidated, and the legislature swiftly made amendments that affected how we had these meetings, they were conducted now electronically. So, what happened is they announced the public act 228, which permits telephonic or videoconferencing meetings in whole or part under the following circumstances, which is going to be a little brief summary of the resolution I presented as we get close to the end of the year. Before January 1st, 2021, and retroactive to March 15, 2020, under any circumstances, we, as we are doing now, are allowed to have telephonic or videoconferencing meetings. On or after January 1st, 2021, to December 1st, 2021, the legislature made the Open Meetings Act to say that only to accommodate absent members of the public body due to military duty or medical condition or a local state of emergency. And you've seen the resolution that described a medical condition, and with everything the way it's going, I hope that, you know, we won't have to rely on the one particular area which the team basically know is related to pandemic. First, 2021, telephonic or videoconferencing meetings in whole or part are only allowed to accommodate members of a public body due to military duty. Furthermore, you'll see some information about things that are required, which we pretty much are already doing, such as the two-way communication, publicly announcing at the beginning of the meeting that we're having, another kind of meeting. One thing that will change going forward in January 2021 is that because they are limiting us to when we can have these meetings and when members of a public body can appear electronically or telephonically, they are requesting that the members that are going to be absent physically, should other members be meeting together again, that you have to identify the physical location where the member is at, including the county, city, township, village, and state. That is military duty. There will also be a requirement to have notice at least 18 hours before electronic meeting, and of course, something we're already doing is how the public can communicate with all the members of the public body. So, I did present a resolution. I'm not thoroughly saying that we need to adopt it tonight because we are getting close to the end of the year, but I wanted to make sure that this honorable body had the information available and understood that it will change as of January 1st, 2021. I know we're going into this three-week pause and hoping for the better, so my recommendation probably would be to look at this and then I would list any comments that you have and then bring back this resolution at our next council meeting to be voted on by this body.
Okay. Our next regular meeting of November 30th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. If that's your pleasure, yes.
Because I'm assuming there will be some questions or comments, I just want to make sure since we don't have another town on December 7th, I believe, and I didn't want to wait.
Okay.
I just wanted to make this presentation.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, I don't have anything else. I would just entertain any comments or questions, and just want to make sure that not only is this body informed, but also all our boards and commissions would need to abide by these same rules.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then we'll review it, and then if we have any questions once we bring it back, we'll ask you at that time.
Okay. Contact me before then, that would be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from the clerk?
Madam President, before myself, if you would allow, we did get Dr. Calhoun back connected from the West Coast, because she would like to say something.
Oh, yes, of course.
Are you there, Dr.?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello? Oh.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm here, thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Zorn and the council for your continued support, and I just want to acknowledge that I will do my very best to provide the highest level of service to the city of Southfield as I have over the past 22 years, and I'm looking forward to my new endeavor. Thank you all so very much for your continued support.
Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to personally thank our poll workers from the November 3rd election. We had almost 400 workers, and I do really value their time, their commitment, their selflessness in making sure that our election ran smoothly. I can't begin to express the gratitude for them as they were frontline workers on that day of the election, and they really put their country first and were very patriotic, and I appreciate every single person for doing that. And again, congratulations to the council leadership. Looking forward to working with you all moving forward. And I also just want to add to our viewing audience and to my colleagues, Zoom has made it, so if you just have a regular subscription, they have taken off the 40-minute limit for Thanksgiving, so you'll be able to talk to your family if you're using Zoom endlessly on Thanksgiving, so I think that will help millions of Americans connect with their family for longer periods of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from the treasurer?
I just wanted to congratulate our newly appointed president and Pro Tem on their selection as leadership, and also to the outgoing president and Pro Tem. Thank you for your service and for your leadership through challenging times. I also wanted to reiterate what was mentioned by Councilman Brightwell earlier regarding the rating for the city. A very excellent presentation was made by Mr. Zorn and all the leadership of the Southfield management team. We put our efforts together to put the best presentation possible for the city, and Standard and Poor's was impressed with our presentation. Unfortunately, due to the challenges of the COVID economy right now, they were not able to raise us higher, but hopefully they will in the future. We've done everything we can to comply with all the requests and go beyond the scope of possibilities, and definitely the team has done an excellent job and leadership of the council, so I want to congratulate everybody on that, and want to wish the viewing audience a happy Thanksgiving and best wishes to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our planner, are you on, still on the line?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to mention to the council that in 2021, we will be updating our community master plan and launching our public input starting sometime in mid-January, a series of virtual meetings and social media and a social input website. More to come, and I just want to wish everybody safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is our assessor? Our engineer, are you still on the line? Okay, hearing none. We have nothing to schedule, no new ordinances, no closed session. Okay, council, if there's nothing else, does anyone else have anything they want to add to the meeting tonight? Okay, hearing none. I wish you all a good night, happy Thanksgiving, and stay safe.